I'd like to call to order the workshop of the Norfolk School Board for Wednesday, February 14th. And I don't want to hold up any more time. So Ms. Tanner, could you please call the roll so we can get started?
Basine.
Here.
Clinton.
Present.
Gabriel.
Present.
Jordan.
Here.
Martin.
Present.
No.
Not present.
Buffalo.
Here. And with no more delay, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Burtsong.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of staff, our community. This evening, or this afternoon, we have a presentation from the VAS team, the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. I asked them to come in and conduct an audit of, or I should say, a study, not an audit, a study, let me be very clear, a study of our human resources function. We're always looking to continuously improve in all areas of the school division. And so, our VAS team did a very thorough job of looking at various documents, conducting a survey of staff, as well as one-on-one and group interviews. And so, we do believe we have some good data that we can work with in making changes for our Department of Human Resources. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Janet Crowley, who is the lead on the VAS team. And she will introduce the team members.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chairman Buffalo, board members, Superintendent Burtsong, thank you for the opportunity to present this afternoon. On behalf of the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, we are appreciative of the opportunity to come and work with you on this study. We have the team here, Dr. Bonnie Wilson, who's a retired finance director, and our team research consultant. We have Dr. Lyle Evans, who's retired assistant superintendent for human resources, and a team member. And of course, Dr. James Roberts, who is also a retired superintendent and a team member. So on behalf of VAS, we want to say thank you for the opportunity. I want to go over a little bit the major objectives of the study. Okay. We were tasked with reviewing the organizational structure of the Human Resources Department and its relationship, not only within the department, but within other central office departments and the schools. Also, we were tasked with reviewing HR policies and regulations, and looking at whether federal and state laws were being followed and school board policies. We also were tasked with review of overall HR functions. And of course, I'm not going to read all of those, but we were looking at onboarding, orientation, application, things of that nature. And review of existing staffing of the HR department, including examination of current job descriptions and comparison to other like-school divisions. Further, we reviewed the role, HR's role in staff development, training, and employee evaluation. We looked at current practices and procedures, especially as it related to hard-to-staff schools. And finally, we looked at, or reviewed, other specific HR practices as requested by the superintendent. I would like to also tell you that we've done 100 of these studies. Norfolk, this was the 101st.
Now they don't...
Okay. The superintendent specifically wanted us to look at the effectiveness and efficiency of the HR department in terms of looking at best practices for public schools. Personnel that we interviewed were very objective in their responses to the questions that we asked. But most importantly, they were focused on what would make Norfolk Public Schools better, especially in terms of human resources. And finally, we looked at the benefits of the study. And of course, we wanted to give objective opinions of the areas that were identified as needing review. So with that, I'll turn the, excuse me, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Wilson.
Chairman Buffalo, Superintendent Burtsong, all assembled?
Thank you, yes. In doing the methodology for this study, we called on what's called mixed method, which we use in all of our studies, which uses a combination of qualitative and quantitative studies. So to that end, we did over 100 face-to-face interviews here onsite, and that was with administrative and support staff, school administrators, and a cross-section of teachers. We also mounted two surveys at Dr. Burtsong's request. One was to administrators, all administrators, central office and principals. The other was to HR staff. And you get the prize for the most responses for our studies for the year. It is very unusual, even in small surveys in studies like this, to get an 80% response from a group. And this was not a sample, it was a total group. And then 100% of your HR staff responded to the survey. We also did intensive documents review. We looked at your organizational charts. We looked at your strategic plan. We looked at the standard operating procedures manual for HR. We looked at your employee handbook, your efficiency study, actually going back to 2008 in the HR section. Dr. Burtsong supplied us with good data on exit and turnover data, so we had all of those things together. We also looked at some similar-sized districts to look at their staffing arrangements and to see how their HR staff was set up. Overall, our conclusions fall into several thematic areas. These are the areas we are using for commendations to you and recommendations for improvements that we have offered to the superintendent. Overall, the people we talked to and from the surveys, people see this as a diverse urban environment where educators really have a chance to make a difference. It's that kind of environment. And I know in scanning through your website and looking at some of your printed materials, you have a lot going on and a lot to be proud of, and people are aware of that. Also, NPS is seen as a student-centered staff. Educators consider the whole child, you have lots of wraparound services, the community is invested in your schools. And the comment was made, teachers are here for the right reasons, the kids. Both surveyed and interviewed employees also expressed respect for the division leadership. Yes, we're both clicking.
Oh.
All right. I think I hit my mouse. Go back one. All right, well, maybe we're missing one. We can go straight to recommendations, or I'll just share with you our rationales for our recommendations, because the rationale comes from all the data that we collected. And that is slide seven on my sheet. There were five different areas where we thought enhancement of your HR program would be very useful. The first was proactive leadership. The second was need for more streamlined and consistently used HR processes. And those would be recruiting, hiring, onboarding, licensure certification, and then also better understanding of the use of specific software programs. And two of those are listed here, the Munis and the Talent Ed. We also heard in our interviews and also found in the surveys that there was more need for a stronger internal communication and external communication, both about the HR's mission and role, and particularly for timely communication with all stakeholders. And that means from within the department, within this building, out in the schools particularly, and then anybody who is coming through HR as an applicant. There was the need for more regularly scheduled professional development for HR, for central office staff, particularly for principals who are involved in the HR processes, and all of these being available to assist with recruitment and retention of staff. And finally, we're suggesting a need for reorganization of the department, for review of job roles and job descriptions due to the amount of turnover that you've had that came from your data, and that you might consider two additional positions in the future down the road. In terms of recommendation one, for a higher level of proactive leadership, these are the aspects of leadership that we mean when we speak the word proactive. Planning and organizing day-to-day the HR team with a focus on timely and excellent customer service with all stakeholders. More regular communication about the mission and the role of HR in the context of your mission and your strategic plan and your vision. Streamlining your processes, all of those processes you're using to find high-quality people, and having everybody use these consistently. Planning for annual professional development for your HR staff, your central office staff, and particularly for your principals who are involved in this process. Understanding the most appropriate and updated technology programs available to support all of your HR functions, and then ensuring that everybody has updated training and that software is updated regularly. And then planning ahead for the next generation of HR leaders. And this could mean collaboration within the department for meeting the vision of the organization. It could also mean working out promotions and opportunities for people who are already within the department or within your central office staff and schools. In streamlining your HR processes, there's several that we would bring to your attention. The first one is the recruiting function. And our suggestion is that you should look at the hard numbers related to where your hires usually are actually coming from. How many are local, how many of them are out of the area or out of state, and particularly to use your principals more actively in the local and out-of-area recruiting. HR and central office leaders could work with principals to develop a clear recruitment plan that outlines special achievements and your special programs, and anything else that's a possible attribute that will be helpful to share with teacher candidates. There's a very tight competitive market right now for hiring. It's not just, you know, tight within the division, it's tight between schools, because teachers are looking at specific schools that they would like to be in. You're also encouraged to expand your recruiting relationship with your local colleges and universities, and to expand your efforts to recruit highly qualified candidates from outside the area and also outside the state. Second process, we'd like to suggest some streamlining is in the hiring process. At the moment, the initial screening of candidates is being done by principals. This would be better and should be done by HR, the first screening. And then HR would eliminate any candidates that are unqualified, do not have private licensure or certification. Then the names of the qualified applicants would go to your schools, to the principals, and that would be a second screening. Then there would be a third screening, as the principals and department heads here develop interview pools. For onboarding, we would suggest that you formalize that process and use it consistently. Right now, there is also the situation where you have several different locations to go to for your onboarding. That includes arriving here, you know, paying for parking, doing a piece here, and then going somewhere else to do another piece, TB testing, for example, or drug testing, so that people are moving around quite a lot outside of the building as they go through this process. And it would be a benefit to you if that could all be consolidated into one location. Regarding internal and external communication, the external website now has a link to all of your official notices. We checked that, and that is now on the front page of your homepage, you're direct-click on. In terms of external and internal, the HR department is encouraged to communicate regularly written processes and regulations. HR standard operating procedures manual is comprehensive, but are our conversations with people not regularly communicated and not regularly gone to as a go-to place. Internal communications, weekly generalist meetings and monthly meetings of all your HR staff should resume, and meetings with the finance department should continue regularly. Those were recommended by the superintendent. New and revised policies applicable to HR should be shared with central office staff and principals or principals...
Excuse me, Madam Chair. If I could ask, could you move the mic just a close, a little bit closer? Thank you.
How about that? All right. Recommendation four, provide a planned calendar of specific professional development, both for the HR staff and for principals related to HR tools and processes. This also gives that opportunity for the proactive leadership of collaboration in the department. And our final recommendation is that you consider a reorganization of your staff as it stands now. And we did look at some other divisions in doing this to see how they lined up their chief positions with their director and lower-level positions. We would recommend to you one additional position, director level, or whatever title you would want to put on it, to handle the instructional and administrative side of your HR work. This would specifically separate, perhaps you're classified, from your professional position, recruiting-hiring function. And that would give you a very strong focus on getting the best and high-quality teachers and administrators that you can get for your program. The second position we would suggest to you is one that would be managing your Talent Ed program, and that's one of the software programs used by HR. There are updates for that program available to you. There are some parts of that program where there are functions that you're not using, one of those being the tracking function, which makes it easy to see where an applicant is in the process, and then respond quickly to either applicants or to principals who are looking for people in those areas. So that would be a position recommendation for you. Secondly, job descriptions. We would suggest a desk audit of all the positions, but specifically the generalist position, which is a professional HR position you have working with the schools, to determine if additional staffing is needed there. And this can be done in conjunction with any of other, filling of other vacancies that you have at the time. All of your current job descriptions, we did a pretty intensive review of, and we drew up a sample to look at them. And we'd like to see those reviewed as soon as possible to be made congruent in terms of their form and their function. And to revise accurately the work done in each of the positions that you have. And this might start in the HR department. Everybody who responded to the question, "Do you have a job description?", responded positively. So everybody has a job description, but the qualifying response to that was also, "But it doesn't really say everything I do." So there are some areas where job descriptions could be brought up to date. And as this is done, wherever possible, cross-train people. You know, whenever we lose a person, someone else fills in. And that person may not be cross-trained, but if we kind of hit that proactively at the front and cross-train people to cover for each other, then we're much more able to meet all of the different and difficult jobs that need to be done within the HR function or any department. Thank you very much. Thank you. And the team is available to take questions at this time.
Okay. School board members, you have heard the presentation. I am now going to open the floor up for any questions. But I will start with board members by your last name, so we can have some order. We're going to first start with Basine, Clanton, Gabriel, Jordan, and Martin, and myself. So with that said, Ms. Basine, you're up.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you.
Let me clarify, we're going to do one and kind of round the robin, so make sure everyone gets at least one question in. So we're going to start with one question, and then we'll go through.
Okay.
With that, okay?
Just one question. All right. I'll start with my... Who am I fielding my question to, I guess? Is... I mean, I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but... Okay.
They're going to field it from their seats.
Oh, from their seats, okay. So you talked a little bit about hard-to-staff, our hard-to-staff schools, and potentially some strategies around that, or how our, I guess, some of the challenges in our HR department have impacted our hard-to-staff school. Can you elaborate a little more on some recommendations, on your recommendations around that, in terms of like, are you suggesting that we consider equitable allocation of staff? Or we... I'd just like to hear a little more about what your recommendation is and what you might be seeing in other districts that are having similar issues.
Good afternoon, board members, and it's really good to be with you. And you're facing the same situation as every school district in the Commonwealth of Virginia when it comes to trying to recruit staff. What the typical human resource department would do for the district 15 years ago was to recruit for the district. But the fact of the matter now is there are fewer teachers, and teachers have choices. And so what our efforts, from what we were suggesting, is that more time is spent in terms of what a specific school has to offer, because all of your elementary school principals are competing with their fellow colleagues for the same people. So they've got to be able to share specifically what they have to offer, the advantages of coming to this school, because they're competing with their colleagues and they're competing with everybody else in the Commonwealth. And if the teacher doesn't get the position that she wants here, there's going to be somebody in some other district that are willing to take them on. So one of the comments that Dr. Wilson was speaking of is, how do you promote each individual school as opposed to just the school district? You know, why do I want to come to A school as opposed to B school, as opposed to another one in another district? And part of the strategy for that is, central office, human resources, and the principal and their leadership team within the school improvement plan said, "This is what we're all about. This is what we promote. This is what our website says. Come join this team because we have these particular programs." So that's a big change, I think, in the thinking that you're seeing across Virginia.
Mr. Clanton.
All right, thank you, Buffalo. You said one question, and then we'll come back around, right? Right, the challenge, right time. Okay. So I want to go back to the, first of all, thank you for this information. This is very helpful. But I did want to go back, and then I'll use my second question, another area here. You said, "We're not using the tracking function," I guess, instead of the Talent Ed component? And so, my question goes back to the, I guess, the procedural type of things there. I know you looked at some things. Are there a lot of things that we aren't using, or is it just based maybe that we're not trained? Is that what I was kind of hinting, or thought I was getting, that folks aren't trained on how to utilize the technology that we have in place?
Yes, the focus was on the training, but that one particular aspect of that program, the tracking function, was the one that we understood was not being used. And that would be extremely helpful, because then you'd know at any given time where a candidate was in the process, first interview, second interview, passed on to the school, waiting to onboard, so you can keep in touch with your applicants. You know, people want jobs. They'll call you and say, you know, "Where am I in the process?" Well, you know, your name has been given to the schools, and so you should be hearing about an interview. It's that kind of constant communication, which is also a form of customer service.
Definitely. And make sure that we maintain, we don't lose folks. And that really kind of dives into this piece, Ms. Buffalo, and the instructional administrative component there about the instruction. So if I'm hearing it right, this director or potential position there...
Potential position.
...as a trainer, that you would have it, this consistent internal training, so that folks are completely aware and new updates and so forth.
Yes. You would have consistent internal training on anything. It could be Munis, your other system that you use also for payroll, or it could be Talent Ed, it could be any software system that you're using. Needs to be continuous, because it's like your phone, everything updates. And so then you have to reorient yourself, if it were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gabriel.
Thank you, Chairman Buffalo. And again, thank you to Dr. Burtsong for initiating the audit, and to...
Study.
Study, sorry. Study, the study, and to VAS for conducting it. My question involves the principals. Can you speak a little bit more to us about what you saw in your research with regards to how a principal should be involved in the process of hiring a building-level teacher versus a specialist that would work in the building?
Good evening, board members. Thank you again for the opportunity. Yes, let me say first, you've got a tremendous group of principals. We spent, especially Dr. Evans and I, spent a lot of time with elementary, middle, and high school principals and assistant principals. Their primary concern is, they are spending enormous amounts of time reviewing applicants in Talent Ed, looking to see if they're licensed appropriately for the job they have in the schools, looking to see if they have all the appropriate credentials other than licenses. I mean, have they finished coursework in every area? And that's why we propose that HR take on more of this function and provide them with a list of, "Here are some excellent candidates," and keep them from having to dig into Talent Ed. I've never used Talent Ed, but I can understand what it does. It provides the principals with opportunities to look at applicants. But what we think needs to happen is Talent Ed needs to be, according to Mr. Clanton's question as well, Talent Ed needs to be used more efficiently, so that if you have a chemistry opening at your building, you need to see all the chemistry applicants that are available that have licenses, appropriate licensure, and can have the coursework necessary to teach the class, especially at the elementary level, that's important. So I think they were, like I said, they're a great group of people. They work hard, but I think you could save them a lot of time by utilizing a centralized effort to screen much better. Does that answer your question?
It does. And then, once the screening takes place, like for a principal, are they a part of the interview process, or like for, like an assistant principal position?
My understanding is they call the candidates to the school to interview. I think it could, it could be a better use of time to have a screening interview at HR, and then allow that result to go to the principals as well. And they could still, they still want to call them to the school to interview, but it would give them a little bit more information to know who to select. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Jordan.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to drill down a little more on the hard-to-staff schools, best practices and recommendations and thoughts you may have. And I'm admittedly thinking it from it, about it from a student-centered perspective. So, one, I guess I'm kind of curious of what, how you define a hard-to-staff school? And through the HR process, did you encounter in your looking at other school divisions, how do you... divisions, how do you collect information and data that, um, let me put it this way, oftentimes what I've heard over the years is nothing new, is that, um, a candidate has choices that was mentioned opening, there's competition within the division, competition across divisions. So if I'm a parent of a child that is consistently in a school where whole grade levels, third grade, second grade, fourth grade, may have long-term subs, are there any best practices out there or recommendations that Dr. Birdsong should be considering or the board maybe from a policy perspective should be considering that waits or somehow prioritizes the students who need the highly qualified, effective teacher the most receiving that? Any thoughts, best practices, experiences around that, whether there's a teacher shortage or not?
That's an excellent question and it's also often a controversial solution in many instances. And I think, first of all, determining to your question, what is a hard-to-staff school? And what's the guideline for that? That's really up to, in my opinion, the instructional staff to define along with the superintendent to say, you know, how a school is performing and the turnover, looking at data such as the turnover rate within the school, the transient population that might be involved with, in terms of the students moving from about, you know, in different locations or different neighborhoods. All those factors together help to determine, I think, what is a hard-to-staff school. The teacher turnover rate and being able to keep people in the building and have a long-term substitute is a big piece of that. And each school district that I'm aware of has a somewhat different set of values that they place on what is determined as a hard-to-staff school. And it depends on what your specific needs are and what the unit superintendent wants to use. But those are the data pieces that typically put in place. Now, in terms of how do you staff them, that's where it gets a little more difficult. In many instances, districts will pay a stipend that's a little bit higher if you are willing to work in this particular school or these groups of schools that have these circumstances that make it even more difficult to fill those slots. That's been somewhat of incentive. The good news that we heard, and in particular Jim and I, and I think the others have as well, is you've got passionate people that are already in the building that really want to do an outstanding job. And we didn't just talk to the principals, we talked to teachers. So you've got good people that really want to do what's right. And to be honest with you, they are some of the best recruiters you got. You know, giving them opportunities to work with principals to talk about what's outstanding in this particular school, even though it may be tagged as hard to staff. This is why I'm here and this is what we do to celebrate the kids, those kinds of things. But I think that the differentiated stipend piece is what you see fairly consistent in terms of if you work in this particular school, there is a stipend available. The catch to that is you have to work in that school for a full year at least and maybe sign a contract for the next year as an incentive to come back if you do an outstanding job. Well, those are just a few things that I would say seem to be consistent.
Thank you.
Dr. Martin?
Thank you, Ms. Buffalo. I wanted to say thank you very much, this is for this study and 102 interviews. I mean, you really, you did, you know, it seems like a really comprehensive job here. And it does focus a lot on functionality and kind of what, to what you were saying, sir, my question's around morale. To what extent did you cover, you know, the morale? Because I want, we want our employees to feel motivated and that they have ownership in this. And so could any of you speak to that? And if there are changes or recommendations that you could make as well?
I can speak to the morale piece in the sense that in the full report, that was a survey question, a question related to that. How well do people in the department get along? You know, how do you feel respected? Do you feel you're listened to? And some of those percentages were not as high as we'd like to see them. And that's where the morale issue comes in. The State Department does school climate studies routinely, generally focusing on schools, but also on support staff. And that goes back to your proactive leadership piece where if you have, you know, the sense of day-by-day support and collaboration with leadership and staff, then those things come together into a high morale situation where people are listened to and the ideas that they have are perhaps used and that that is regularly, regularly scheduled meeting time for people to share ideas and also to learn whatever else they might need to know about what's new in HR. It could be a talent ed upgrade, it could be some other kind of upgrade. So the morale piece is very important to both the efficiency and effectiveness of a department.
I would just add also that the, you've got some real superstar principals that can really motivate their staffs. And there's many professional development opportunities that you can provide for your teachers, tuition reimbursement, anything along those lines where they know that they're valued, whether they're working on a master's degree program and could get additional tuition reimbursement toward that is a huge motivator. And I think that from time to time, celebrating before the board sometimes, you know, when teachers do an outstanding job and they see that their colleagues are being recognized regardless of what school they're in. And you're probably doing some of these things now, but I'm just saying, these are things that typically we see in school districts. But I would say just listening to your principals and teachers, that professional development opportunities. If you tell me I'm not doing well in this area, that's easy to tell me that. Now what do I do to improve and how are you going to help me do it? And typically, that's professional development opportunities, taken care by the district, not the teacher.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Ms. Stone?
I don't have any interesting questions. Okay. Well, I have several, but I'm going to stick to what I said I was going to. So my question is regarding the absence of a classification and compensation coordinator. So my question is, in HR, who conducts market studies? Because we're talking about hiring, retention, and those kind of things. So who in our department conducts market studies to benchmark positions against surrounding divisions and salary placement? How are we getting that information? We want everyone to come and work here, so we want to make sure we have competitive.
That is generally a leadership function in most, in most divisions. We have done, in fact, 20% of the studies we've done have been compensation, pure, what I call it, pure compensation study. And those look at similar districts, districts of same size, maybe just region two districts, and provide benchmarks to set salaries against. And these are done in some school divisions, these are done annually before you get to budget time. We were not tasked with specific compensation study for this study. That would be something that would be a function of HR and compensation also, your finance people also.
Thank you. So Ms. Basine?
Let's see. So Mr. Jordan kind of touched on, I did want to drill down a little more on the hard-to-staff and I think my comments are really toward the board as we consider, you know, in our budget discussions and really think about what other strategies and resources that we may want to put in place. Because I definitely hear the suggestion, you know, that our schools perhaps, you know, better market themselves. You know, I've gone to some of our job fairs and I know our principals have been working so hard to promote their own schools. I see them all the time, you know, trying to promote and attract, you know, employees to their, to their, to their own school. So I know that, I feel like we need to think outside the box and I've said this for the last couple of years, I think. And I think we have to be bold and I think we need to really consider, you know, stipends, whether it's, you know, stipends, incentives for the specific schools that year after year that we're seeing this consistent low teacher fill rates. And I was just quickly looking at the last HR report and we only have six schools that are at 100% capacity and we have nearly 30% that are under 80%, 80%, 80% below. And so, and some of those schools are even below 70%. And so we really have to, I know we're all keeping in mind that our students are on the other end of this and that we're all prioritizing that, but I, actually, I would, I am going to say for myself that I don't feel that I am prioritizing it in a way that I can as a board member, which means that I'm looking at those specific schools that are, that have the low fill rates and advocating that we do more for those particular schools. So I'm putting that, taking my own accountability around that. And I hope that we, as a board, will do more around that.
Mr. Clanton, you have any question or comment?
I do. I wanted to go back to, because I've often gotten this question, particularly about retirees and others who may have been a member of the division, may have separated not even a year, but find it frustrating with the level of paperwork that they have to go back through. And so my question back to you is, is that you, did you see anything with that when you were looking at processes and so forth? I know you talked about centralizing, you know, drug screening and so forth, but I know there's a lot of moving around. But is there also anything that you may have identified in potentially streamlining the level or the amount of paperwork? Is it so necessary? I mean, I'm quite sure that there are certain things, background checks and things that are required, but is there maybe some things that you may have identified that we could streamline and even look at those who have been separated for a shorter period of time? Maybe there's a more streamlined way of getting them back in here and that may address some of this when we're trying to get folks in the classroom and they're maybe with their long-term certain subs, but they still have certifications and so forth. So that was my question out there, if you identified anything like that.
That's an excellent question. I don't have a complete answer, but I'll tell you what I think the biggest issue is, is when you have retirees that may have let the license lapse. So, but they can be awesome long-term substitute teachers while they're doing what they need to do to get that license straight. So that's, that's a part of it. And working directly with the State Department and your licensure specialist to see what needs to be done to get that piece. Now, that's what's happened in a lot of other districts. We didn't specifically talk much about that particular aspect of it in terms of recruitment, but obviously people are using retirees. The paperwork is probably leaning more on the licensure side, especially if they worked here before. Now, you've still got to have a criminal histories check, they're still going to have to do some type of application, especially if they're coming in from a different district. But I think a lot of it is, I've been out for three years, I need to get that license back. But even with that, you can hire them back, at least as a board sub, until that process is complete. Now, Dr. Birdsong, you probably have more insight on that than I do at this point.
Yes, I know within the study, the team mentioned that we were the only school division that required the drug testing of all employees before they were hired and perhaps that was one of the reasons why the process is perceived to be untimely. Would you speak to that?
Yes, I will tell you that there is no requirement in many, many school districts in the Commonwealth of Virginia for a drug test for a teacher without cause. So there are teachers that are being hired that go through the criminal histories check, obviously. But if I'm, and your attorney, I talked to your attorney about this, but the bottom line is, there's no requirement that I know of by law that you have to do a drug test for every teacher. You have to do one, you can have one done if there's reasonable cause that there is a, that a person may be under the influence or you've gotten some, some issues with that. And then even if, again, from my memory, even if the employee is a classified employee, you can, you're not required to do a drug test unless the person is actually driving a vehicle carrying students. I forgot the name of that law, but, and then you can even do random drug testing for them. It's not everybody. You can set up a pool and actually have it done randomly. So, and I think what Dr. Birdsong is saying is your requirement is everybody has to have a drug test. That's another visit. That's another hoop that you're requiring people to jump through. And I don't know if there's any local requirement from the police or anybody along those lines, but I'm pretty sure that you don't have to have a drug test of an employee unless you have reasonable suspicion that you've employed them and there is a drug issue.
And so that really just comes in, is that a policy or a protocol?
It's a policy.
So it's a board level policy?
It's one of our board policies that you should consider looking at. You should consider that.
Thanks for that reminder.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Dr. Gabriel?
Thank you. When, when you all were evaluating the application process for classified personnel, did you find that the process was appropriate or did you find that the process could maybe be simplified? For example, if a candidate was looking to apply to be a nutrition specialist, should they be required to submit a resume and other items such as that? Or did you feel that the process that we have right now is appropriate?
Process itself seems fine. It's the, you know, sort of streamlining, timeliness, customer service aspect of it that could use enhancement. Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you again. If you don't mind, I just want to put a, deal with an elephant in the room as I see it. We talk about hard-to-staff schools, often research and analysis I've been a part of, they are often high-poverty schools, predominantly students of color. And I think teachers are highly professional and go into the profession to make a difference for children, period. And so I struggle with the, someone wrote a book, you know, what is it about me that you cannot teach? Can't you teach? And so I'll just speak for myself. There's no way in the world I would accept for my child to go grade level after grade level with not certified teachers, never mind a pathway from elementary to middle to high school. I wouldn't allow it, wouldn't do it, wouldn't accept it. And, and I think a lot of folks that feel they have a sense of agency wouldn't do it and know how to work the system so that it would not occur. As superintendent speaking to a school board, what type of cover or it was mentioned earlier, values, beliefs, can we establish as a school board that would give, you know, clear messaging to, to our staff that are already here, that we value them, but to those that we're trying to recruit, that this is a place where we want you to come and serve children no matter where they live, how they cross the threshold in the morning, and we will support and reward you? Is it something we can do as a school board that fits on the value? Is it something we can do as a school board that fits on the value on a, on a bulletin board that provides the superintendent and the HR department and principals and everybody else the type of, I don't know if it's cover, support, whatever language you want to use, that that's our position for Norfolk Public Schools? And if you come here, you'll be supported, be rewarded, and, and our children will be well-served. From a board perspective, what can we do to support superintendents that are interested in helping us achieve our goal around, around this?
Well, that's the question of the day, because I can tell you, it's not Norfolk superintendent facing that, it's everybody. The number one thing you can do is wake the people up in Richmond, that would be my opinion. They're, they're not doing the job, they're ignoring the obvious, they're not giving you the tools you need to attract and retain the appropriate number of high qualif, highly-qualified individuals, which is stated in our constitution, to be certified in Virginia and every, any state to teach children. I agree with you. I wouldn't want my child there either with every year having that. But we're facing a situation right now that's bigger than here, bigger than Norfolk, bigger than the study we did. And it's, so I think, to answer your question directly, number one, you need to, and you do, I'm sure you do lobby appropriately. But the second thing is, you could look at your benefits. Just personal opinion, we did a, I was superintendent when we didn't have any money. It was from 2008 to 2018, my whole time in office. We tried to find things that could benefit our teachers so that they would want to stay. We opened a pharmacy, we opened wellness centers. And, and to be honest with you, that's one of the only positive responses I got in my, my tenure. And I know Dr. Birdsong's facing the same thing. It's, it's not all about money. It's, it's, it's what Dr. Evans was telling you, your principals are already there in terms of promoting their individual schools. But I think in terms of our study, if you had a, if you had a component of the, of the process or function of HR that could interview and find teachers that would be a good fit, there are teachers out there that only want to teach in schools that you described. And they're there. And if, if you can identify them and send those persons to those, to schools, then that, that's a big help. But you've got to get them in. And the pool is not what it used to be. So I, that's probably beyond what our team did, but to answer your question, I, I know what you're saying. And it's a universal problem. It's probably nationwide. And we need to work, we need to do something different to make that happen. And it's not just what can the General Assembly do next year? The J-Lock study, I'm sure you've seen, is amazing. It's amazing that the arm of the General Assembly finally said what the General Assembly's not been doing. I mean, they have told you clearly that you're not funding schools at the appropriate level, you're not funding schools from the State Department viewpoint as the schools are, what the schools are actually doing. You're, you're staffing what you have to staff, but they're not, they're not funding those staff members. So there's a lot of things that, and I know they have issues to deal with, they've got a lot of tugs and jerks about all kinds of different funding problems that they have at the state level, but they've ignored schools for 15 years. And you're not going to get that money back for 15 years that you didn't get. And your, your, your salary scales are, are not going to catch up. There's a lot of effort to go to national, meet the national average. Well, you've got to remember, everybody's going to be looking at that. And so, that national average is going to keep going up and up. So, didn't mean to ramble, but that's, that's where I think we have, that's what we have to do. We have to push as hard as we can push to get the people that, that, that we depend on to give us the opportunity to have the resources available to do the things that we have to do.
Madam Chair, I appreciate the, the response. I've read many of your op-ed pieces. And, and I'm also proud that Norfolk led the way for that J-Lock study to, to take place. Madam Chairs, we have further discussion as a board. And I know we've touched on some of this in our non-negotiables and in our goals. But I would, like for us as a board, moving forward, to truly have a uncut conversation around how we are not going to tolerate having students in grade level after grade level and building after building and, and using Dr. Birdsong's words, you know, whatever it takes, no matter what. I think we need to have a real conversation about that and not, I'll speak for myself and not for me to sit here and just see the HR reports month after month, year after year, and we accept this scenario as there's nothing we can do. I, I don't, I choose not to accept that. And I know we can have a conversation about it.
Note taken. Dr. Martin, you have any comments or question?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Stone?
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you again, vast team, for coming out to present to us today. We thank you very much for our HR study. Thank you so much. With that said, may I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move to go into closed session.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Tanner, please read the resolution.
Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board of the city of Norfolk pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A1 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of personnel on today's regular personnel agenda. Discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A2 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of students on today's regular student support agenda. Consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A8 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the closed session is for legal advice regarding the matters set above in subsections A and B of this motion. Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Thank you for joining us tonight, the school board meeting for the Norfolk School Board for Wednesday, February 14th. Again, thank you all for being here. Ms. Tanner, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Basine?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Martin?
Present.
Stone?
Here.
Buffalo?
Here.
Mr. Satter, would you please do the honors of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Good evening. We request that all cell phones and pagers to be turned off or to vibrate during the course of this meeting. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to adopt the, the agenda for this evening?
I move that we adopt the agenda for this evening.
May I have a second?
A second.
Ms., Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
We'll move on to 4.05, School Board Clerks Report. Ms. Tanner?
Madam Chairwoman, board members, our student representatives, I want to share that school districts around Virginia are recognizing February as School Board Appreciation Month. Some of you have received some gifts already today on the day. In honor of this month, the Virginia School Board Association has provided special certificates to be given to you as well, and we have a special recognition also. First, I'd like to ask our board members and student representatives to go to this step and repeat for just a moment, please, as Dr. Birdsong accompanies me to present the certificates.
And we're going to start with our student representatives. First, we have Cameron. Congratulations from Virginia School Board Association. You've got to show the certificate. Awesome. Next, we have Abigail Jackson. And now, our beloved school board members, starting with Chair Tiffany Moore Buffalo.
Do I get a picture?
For the scrapbooks. Next, Dr. Noel Gabriel, Vice Chair.
I covered up.
Next, time, you've Basine, School Board Member. Mr. Jordan, our other School Board Member. Right, next, we have Dr. Adele Martin, School Board Member. And Ms. Nichelle Stone, our School Board Member. Awesome. And you all stay in place. And Dr. Birdsong, you stay here. Next, we have a presentation of artwork from our talented students here in Norfolk Public Schools as a token of appreciation and recognition for School Board Appreciation Month. A special thank you to those students whose artwork is represented today. And so, the first one, since you flipped it over, the first one, no, that's a good thing. Thank you. Thank you, Vanna. Thank you. Wonderful. The first one goes to Ms. Stone and the student, let me read their name, from Anders Whitaker from Ocean View Elementary School. And it's an abstract artwork. Looks like a painting.
Wow.
So now, you've got to take a picture of that, too. Yes, you've got to show the artwork. We want to highlight the baby's artwork.
Oh, yeah, of course.
And, and this next one is very special for Dr. Martin, is Jackson Martin.
Oh.
Show and tell.
It's pretty.
Congratulations. And the next one, we know that Mr. Clanton would love, is a rendering of Morrie High School. Mr. Clanton?
Sebastian Ford of Morrie High School.
Oh, wow. That's great. That's great. Can I see it? Patient. Really wrong.
And the next one is for our Chair, Ms. Buffalo, from Hawn Bond of Ocean Air Elementary School. Yes, some very talented students in Norfolk Public Schools.
Absolutely. Yes, we do. Beautiful.
Next, we have Mr. Jordan, and it's from Ayana Brown of AOIS Academy of International Studies at Rosemont. Very abstract. Yeah, yeah. Wait for the rotation. It's coming.
Do they now come? That's right. Mr. Jordan, that's right.
And next, we have Dr. Gabriel, and hers is from Joseph Howard of Lake Taylor School, A Bowl of Fruit.
Oh, wow.
Great detail.
Yeah, yeah. She said, "Give it to me."
Awesome. And just real quick, as a reminder, please view all the student artwork here in the boardroom, 12th floor and 11th floor. We have some very talented students. I had a family come a couple of weeks ago, and the children and the parents took a picture by their, their artwork on 11th floor. So this really means a lot to our parents and our students to highlight that. So, thank you very much. You guys can be seated. Ms. Tanner, please don't go anywhere. Come around to this side of the podium, please. Today, you're going to receive one. So, we're celebrating School Board Appreciation Month, but we're also this week celebrating School Board Appreci, School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. So we want to say we love you to our School Board Clerk, Ms. Tanner, who assists and support us as a board. Seven different personalities, but she gets it done. Thank you so much. So we want to present this resolution of appreciation to you, Ms. Tanner, and I'm going to read it, okay?
Okay.
All right.
You used to read them, right?
Yeah, yeah. Whereas, School Board Clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities. And whereas, School Board Clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and dispersments, and a record of all official acts. And whereas, School Board Clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media, on behalf of the school board and superintendent. And whereas, School Board Clerks in the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings. And whereas, School Board Clerks join with school boards to help ensure that students achieve their highest potential. And whereas, School Board Clerks provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents, the Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors does hereby recognize the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas, the school board joins the VSBA Board of Directors in recognizing February 12th through 16th, 2024, as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Karen Tanner has earned their appreciation of the Norfolk School Board, superintendent, staff, students, families, and the community for her unyielding support and dedication in her service as School Board Clerk. And now, be it further resolved that this resolution be acknowledged, acknowledged by the Norfolk School Board, who take great pride in recognizing the professionalism and service of pride in recognizing the professionalism and service of Karen Tanner, and herewith express their sincere gratitude for the valuable contribution she has made to Norfolk Public Schools on this 14th day of February 2024, and present it to Karen Tanner, and it's signed by the full School Board and Superintendent, Dr. Burson. And we have a little gift for you as well. And the words of Sally Fields, "They really do love me." I would be remiss. I have to grab something real quick because you need to be recognized. I thought your phone was there. Okay. Hold on one second. Save the best for last. This is from Alexis Townsend from Granby High School. Thank you for all that you do, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. How did I forget her? Awesome. Thank you all very much. You all can be seated, and thank you. And Madam Chairwoman, as you all make your way back to your seats, in honor of African American History Month, students and teachers around Norfolk Public Schools held many recognitions and celebratory activities as a learning opportunity for all NPS students. Jennifer Lopez, Senior Coordinator of History and Social Science, created a special video to highlight important history lesson with the Living Museum at Richard Boland Elementary School. Channel 47, can you show the video?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Lopez, Senior Coordinator of History and Social Science for Norfolk Public Schools. And today, I'm here at Richard Boland Elementary to hear more about their Black History Month celebration. Let's go check it out.
Hey, black child! Do you know who you are? Who you really are? Do you know you can be what you want to be? If you try to be what you can be?
Students are super excited. We have had in our upper grades more than just the two students that we asked for that want to be a part of the African American Living Museum. They are super excited. Our parents are super excited.
My name is Dr. Mary James. I'm the first active American female astronaut to fly out of space. If you can dream, you can do it for the stars.
I love learning about the people, my ancestors and people that came before me. They've created and did many things for us to have, you know, not being slavery or be enslaved. They've did a lot for us to come, for future generations, on and on, so that we can live in peace. And I like to honor them by every year celebrating Black History Month, so that we can remember the people that fought for us, for our freedoms.
We have performances by our cheer team, which are our dancers, and they're dancing to a song called "Stand Up" from Polly. Just a great time to be able to get our students, especially during Black History Month, to be able to get our students together to learn more about African American history.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. We're going to move on to 4.06 Superintendent's Report. Dr. Burson.
All for being here this evening. We'll try to show you a little something about what our children in Norfolk Public Schools, what they're accomplishing within the classroom. This video also outlines some of our community partnerships that we're very, very proud of. Have a breaking news segment that you're going to absolutely love. Stay tuned.
You can roll the video, Channel 47.
Congratulations to Maury High School Senior Christy Dezier for being named one of five Virginia nominees for the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program in Career and Technical Education. As the commanding officer of Maury's NJROTC and a student in the Medical and Health Specialties Program, Christy is dedicated to excellence. Her naval instructors who nominated her for this prestigious award are consistently impressed with her high academic standards, community service, and outstanding leadership skills.
That was almost a no-brainer. So when we thought about the competition, everything that she does for us and for the school made her the number-one candidate. She's not only a great student, she's an entrepreneur. And she runs this ROTC, which consisted of about 120 people. That's a lot of folks, a lot of responsibility. So I know she could do it.
Her leadership ranks above average in the top, top, top. She is very vocal, her leadership, her attendance, her performance, her uniform. She takes pride in what she does. The position she's in right now and the ranking of this award, I know that I don't see another one better.
For Christy, being a U.S. Presidential Scholar nominee is the culmination of all her hard work and belief in herself.
It means that all the stuff that I've done up until this point actually mattered because I've really just been doing it for myself mainly. I wasn't really, as I said, expecting to get something out of it. But to earn something from this, it means a lot because it means I've been recognized for all the things I've done up until now.
The Cardinals News Network at Southside STEM Academy at Campus Stella is taking off thanks to a group of motivated students and two dedicated teachers. Students working in this video production class learn about researching, anchoring, and editing the news. With daily broadcasts and a growing YouTube presence, this innovative newscast gives students confidence and the opportunity to learn new skills.
To be honest, at the beginning, it was kind of rocky because you have some students like, this is too much. I don't know if I'm going to be able to do it. But then, once the students started to get comfortable, and also when teachers started walking up to the students and say, oh, I saw you on the news, and giving us feedback, because that's what we base our news off, is the feedback in the comments, the students, they love it.
I do the writing part and do the anchors, teach them how to talk. I'm a former producer from WTKR Channel 3. So I wanted to make sure that they could read properly. We want to be, try and keep it as cutting-edge as possible and just to keep it as fresh and as innovative as possible.
I am an anchor, so I get the computer, and I put it to my own speed, and I read and record myself. It makes me feel happy that they're giving us as K through 8 to be able to do this stuff before high school or middle school.
We can learn new things. So like editing, researched, and just being not afraid or shy in front of a camera. In the future, I want to be an editor and learn how to do new things in life. I don't just want to stick to basketball or football. I want to learn new things that I haven't did before.
The NPS School-to-School Attendance Challenge picked up right where it left off before winter break, with Maury High School's energetic special education attendance superstars showing up at Northside Middle School. It was an epic flag handoff. The following week, Compass Academy at Ruffner welcomed the Northside Stars with a pep rally to accept the challenge. Ruffner then brought some island fun to Norview Middle School by playing the steel drums before handing over the NPS attendance flag, and the navigators decided to parade the flag down the road to their older neighbors at Norview High School. Students and staff continue to challenge each other to get to school on time every day, ready to learn. During the Pilots Challenge Week, students, teachers, administrators, and alumni endured chilly conditions to greet students and remind parents and guardians of their role in getting their scholars to school on time.
We graduated from Norview.
You can do! I can discuss!
Booker T. Washington High School's Crystal Carter was recognized for her skills on and off the wrestling mat, as she was named Atlantic Orthopedic Student Athlete of the Month.
I feel great. I feel amazed to win. I know it was a lot of hard work, a lot of years of wrestling, and I feel honored, really honored.
As one of the leaders on the wrestling team, Carter was happy her teammates could share in this accomplishment.
Well, we're all like a family, so I feel like I kind of didn't without them and Coach Reynolds and my other coaches because they helped me become the person I am today in wrestling.
Her coach is impressed with how Carter gets things done at a high level.
The way she can multitask by bringing, because she's a multiple thing, she's a color guard and ROTC, soccer, softball, church member, and I was just like, how do you do that and maintain your grades? How do you do that? She said, "Coach, I prioritize it in my fold. I put everything in my fold with a time and everything." And I thought that was amazing. So the fact that she can do all these things and be good at all of these things is a special kid.
The 2023 state football champions, Maury Commodores, were recently recognized with a proclamation by the city council to commemorate their victory. The following night, the team was received by the school board and congratulated on their hard-earned championship season.
We celebrated National Girls and Women in Sports Day by looking at a pair of employees who do great work for our students. Norview High's Kim Barnes, a Hall of Fame softball player and health and PE teacher who still has a passion for coaching.
I love coaching. I've been doing it for 23 years now, 24 years, and I really do enjoy the aspects of seeing a player that's never played the game before. The light bulb goes off and goes, oh, I understand how.
Susan Adi, a Granby alum who is now back as an athletic trainer. She relishes her role to pass on her knowledge.
I knew that I wanted to do something in athletics. Again, you know, I saw the benefits of it, and I saw the impact that it had on me. Like, I could kind of control my body, and I could control, you know, what I did to my body would help me to be a better athlete, and I could help other people to achieve that same result.
Watch both their videos on WMPS Channel 47, Norfolk Public Schools YouTube page, and all our other social media platforms.
The first batch of Rockstar Award winners for 2024 were surprised by administrators at their schools in late January. This unique award recognizes exceptional teachers for perfect attendance or reaching at least 95% student participation on their STAR-Literacy assessments. Winners appreciated the acknowledgement of all their hard work and their love for their students.
It feels amazing. I needed that. It's like an extra push to keep doing what I do, and it's like I got like some extra vitamins and extra energy in me now. So, yeah, I really appreciated it.
Honestly, from what y'all saw, I was pretty shocked. I didn't expect it at all. I think it's great. It's the opportunity for us to see that we're valued as employees because I dedicate every part of my life outside of my job to my job. So I deserve this.
Students at Ocean View Elementary can now learn about renewable energy thanks to a partnership with Dominion Energy and the National Energy Education Development Program. A recent ribbon-cutting ceremony celebrated the new 30-foot-tall micro wind turbine with solar panels and storage batteries that's located in front of the school. A hands-on curriculum will be provided to help students discover more about green energy.
And we hope that the students will learn that, you know, energy is sustainable. You know, energy is free. Solar and wind comes from, you know, from the earth. So we want them to be able to understand and to learn the value of the new energy, renewable energy.
It's really cool, really. Because to be one of two in Virginia is actually kind of cool because Virginia is a big place. It can help us reserve energy. So like, if there's a power outage or something, then we'll have like more energy to go off of.
I'm really excited. It makes us feel special because there are only two in Virginia, and we're lucky to have at least one of them. It can give us more energy. So it's like a giant generator.
It's taken a while, but anything fabulous takes a while. So it feels amazing just to see the looks on the kids' faces when they see that wind turbine spinning like crazy and knowing that we're generating clean, green energy, and that they're part of that is just, it's thrilling. It's absolutely thrilling.
Miss Virginia 2023 Katie Rose visited students at Taylor Elementary to spread a special message about the importance of eating well, exercising, and maintaining positive relationships throughout their lives. She emphasized that they can be leaders just by making great decisions. At the end of the presentation, students asked her a variety of questions, and it was clear her message got through to them.
I think it's important because this is how we make a difference. These are the people who are going to be our future. They're the ones who are going to elect our leaders. They're going to be our leaders. And so teaching them at a young age about how to make the right choices and build and maintain those healthy relationships and make positive, healthy connections is something that I think will last for the rest of their lives.
I was really excited to see her because I want to be a doctor when I grow up, and the stuff that she said could help me when I grow up. Healthy stuff like take care of yourself, say no, put boundaries, and everything that you put your mind to, make sure you do it.
It's, I think it's really important for a school to experience something like that because it gives children a great message about like how to live well and how to maintain relationships, how to be healthy, how to be happy, really.
Have you ever wanted to take a more active role in your child's education? Join Norfolk Public Schools and our community partners for Family University on March 23rd from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Norview High School. This exciting day will feature fun, hands-on classes and activities for all ages designed to provide you with strategies to help your children learn at home. Transportation, breakfast, and lunch will be provided. Register today because it takes a village no matter what.
For more stories and information about what's happening in Norfolk Public Schools, visit the NPS homepage and click on the YouTube link.
Awesome. Great things are happening in Norfolk Public Schools. We're going to move on to 4.07 Citizen Comments. Ms. Tanner, do you have any speakers signed up? Yes, Chairman Buffalo, for today's Citizens Comments, we have three speakers. Today's speaker signed up for public comments before the start of today's business meeting. If you would like to provide public comments, you are required to state the agenda item or items or topic you are addressing prior to providing your public comments at this meeting. When your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's podium, state your name and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the district, and state your agenda items. One person is to speak at a time. If you are representing a group, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position and give facts or relevant data. Avoid saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees. Personnel, disciplinary, and confidential matters may be addressed to the school board directly via email at schoolboard@npsk12.com. Comments should be addressed to the board. Comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. School board members do not respond to public comments at the time they are given. Any written statements or supporting materials should be given to the clerk. Chairwoman Buffalo, our first speaker for today is Liz Albert, followed by Charlotte Smith-Warley.
Welcome. Hello there. Chairman Buffalo, Vice Chair Gabriel, school board members, and Dr. Birdsong. My name is Liz Albert, and I'm the second Vice President of the River Forest Shores Wayside Manor Easton Place Civic League. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our civic league, which on Monday night voted unanimously to support the superintendent's recommendation that the vacant Easton preschool be retrofitted to accommodate Madison Open House camp, and Open House campus, open campus students. And I just want, I forgot to tell you, I don't have children in public schools. After hearing from the Chief of Schools Barbara Kimsey and the Chief Operating Officer Rick Fraley, we agree that the Easton location is a perfect fit for these programs. Our civic lead and civic league and area residents feel strongly that Easton needs to be preserved as a school site. As part of our rationale, we point to the tremendous growth in residential housing that has occurred in our area. The east side of Norfolk has been the site for the construction or planned construction of four large-scale apartment complexes. Also, an estimated 1,000 new units are slated for Military Circle area down the road. We all know that if you turn over Easton to the city, the school will inevitably be torn down. Why would the board give away any school in the east side considering the growth that is facing us? Having this school in your inventory also solves the immediate problem of moving Madison students out of a dilapidated building. A city should value its children, even those with discipline problems. When I drive past Virginia Beach's Renaissance Academy, I can't help but compare what that city does for its challenged children and what is taking place here in Norfolk. Dr. Birdsong has taken the first step towards an improved reality for children that some have given up on. When a child goes to a school that is in miserable shape, it says to him or her, "This is all you deserve. We must do better. We simply must." With that imperative in mind, I end my remarks with a request that you approve the recommendation to retrofit Easton to accommodate Madison and open campus students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Charlotte Smith-Warley.
Charlotte Smith-Warley has no children in Norfolk Public Schools. My name is Charlotte Smith-Warley. I'm here tonight to ask the school board to restore to the proposed operating budget the recommendation that Norfolk Public Schools enter into a feasibility study of Lake Taylor High School becoming a comprehensive career and technical education school operating under a public charter. On February 2nd, the superintendent released a PowerPoint presentation defining operating budget recommendations for the next fiscal year. I was elated to see the recommendation for Lake Taylor possibly becoming a comprehensive CTE school. However, that recommendation has been removed. I was advised that it was removed so the school board could discuss the issue. The operating budget is a perfect place for that recommendation to be. Recommendations in the operating budget are open for discussion. There is a timeline and an expectation of a vote. They are action items. A general discussion, as suggested, absent a planned vote is just one more delay in what has proven to be a fruitless process. I am asking again that the school board restore the recommendation to the proposed operating budget. I sent each of you the report that a consultant did in 2013 recommending Lake Taylor as the best choice for a CTE based on the size of the site, the building condition, and location. A discussion ensued about the possibility of Booker T. Washington serving as the site instead of Lake Taylor. The entire conversation fizzled out instead of recommending and following the consultant's wishes of Lake Taylor being the site. And here we are, 11 years later. Zero progress has been made on strategically reshaping CTE until now. You must restore the recommendation of the operating budget, the recommendation to the operating budget by making it an action item. Otherwise, the discussion will fizzle out once again, just as it did in 2013. Additionally, you may not know that August of 2019, Mayor Alexander announced that he was advocating a full-time CTE under the charter. Now, five years later, finally a recommendation to move forward and it disappears. Restore this recommendation to the operation budget tonight. Take some action to move forward. If not, you only prove that this is the same political objective that it was back in 2013. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and finally, we have Neil George, Maury High School Garden Club.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Madam Chair. I am really happy to be in front of you again. I want to let you know that I am a teacher at Maury. I am also the proud parent of two graduates from Maury that were really well-prepared. We've got one who's at the Coast Guard right now in boot camp. She's in her fourth week, and I've got another one who's a senior at ODU, really excited about their future. Maury Norfolk Public Schools did an incredible job with them. Want to tell you about some other incredible kids. I've got 64 students in Garden Club. In 16 meetings, they've provided over 344 hours of service this year. 344 hours, 16 meetings, that's it. You know, the hundreds of kids have been in Garden Club. We've had some of the most interesting experiences. A few years ago, we incubated eggs. And I'm one of your teachers, inclusion teachers. I work with students with autism. We had two incubators in my, in my classroom. We had, one day, we had 170 students come into our room. It's 10% of the population. Again, working with students with autism, I have been teaching them about the chickens and chicken history, chicken facts. They started turning around and sharing them, those facts with all of their peers. It was an amazing thing. Those chickens during COVID, we were the zoo that was still open. One bag of food was lasting me, normally it would last a month. It was lasting me almost two months, because so many people were bringing food. That's the chickens, the bees. You know, this year, we did extract some honey. We were successful that we had a little bit of honey off of one of our three hives. Not a lot of people realize that we have hives, but we do have three hives. We've gathered them from swarms. The biggest is actually from somebody's yard. We combined, we had another one from Battleship Wisconsin. Just great things. I could go on and on. There are a lot of great things happening at Maury. Some of you have seen the garden. I want to invite all of you to come and see the garden, and I'd be happy to get you suited up and go into the bees with me with the remaining time. I do want to give you a little gift. Again, this is from the Maury students in the Garden Club, and we are super appreciative of all that you have done. So thank you so much. So this is jars of honey, little bears, and again, the students were the ones, you're welcome. So welcome.
Thank you. All you do?
Yep.
Awesome. Get some Pollard's Chicken. Thank you.
Awesome stuff. Thank you so much.
And this concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. Y'all have one. Produce one extra.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda, but I do, 4.08, I do believe I have a motion to remove the proposed calendar.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to, to defer item 5.01, School Board Fiscal Year 2425 Meeting Calendar into our next business meeting for action.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Planton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve this consent agenda.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Planton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye. We'll move on to 6.01 Monthly Financial Report. Dr. Birdsong?
Me again. We're going to have our Chief Finance Officer, Mrs. Feivey, who will present this month's financial report.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Gabriel, and Dr. Birdsong and the school board members. This evening, I'll be reviewing the financial reports for the, for the year ending January 1st, January 31st of this year. Oh, you want me to do it? Yeah, if you will. Sure. Sorry. Looking, looking at this first, the bottom of this first slide, this financial report is the January report and covers seven months of the fiscal year that began July 1 of 2023. As with the previous financial reports, this report reflects July through January transactions that were recorded on or before February 6th. As shown in the financial highlights page, the general fund collections during the first seven months totaled $210 million and represent 52.6% of the $399 million general fund budget. Collections during the same period, during the previous two years ranged between 50 and 53.2%. As with prior years, collections are based on the cash collected during this, this period. On the next page of the highlights, we provide the general fund, let's see, get back. Provide the revenues and expenditures on this page. By the end of January, we had spent or encumbered $210.9 million or 52.6% of the $399 million budget. During the previous two years, spending at this point in the year ranged from 46.3% to 48.2% of the budget. Spending this year is ahead of the previous two years, with the most significant increases being employee compensation and related benefits, as well as special education professional services such as therapists. The next two pages has two graphs, one showing our revenue trends and the other showing our expenditure trends. These graphs represent monthly revenue and spending for the current and two previous years. The remaining pages in this financial report are more detailed information of the information that I just provided. And the last page of this report, if there's, there were no transfers, no transfers over $50,000 during the month of January. And with that, I will take any questions you may have.
Hey, board members, you've heard the financial report. May I have a motion on the floor to approve the monthly financial report?
I move that we approve the monthly financial report subject to audit.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hereina, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Planton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye. We'll move on to 6.02 NPS Financial Audit Presentation. Dr. Birdsong?
Yes, thank you. This evening, we have with us representatives from Clifton, Larson, Allen. Our financial audit again this year, and so I'm going to ask our representative to come forward. She's brand new. This is the first time that she's conducted an audit for, for Norfolk Public Schools, so it's been quite an experience for her, an enjoyable one. She's still smiling. We're pleased to announce overall that we've had another wonderful audit this school year. So we're very proud of the work that's being done behind the scenes, Mrs. Feivey, Ms. Deverie, our Director of Budget, Mr. Duran. Just thank you all for the good work, and I am certain that you'll have questions, and we are prepared to address those questions if you have any.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. I'm Sherri Amos. I'm a principal with Clifton-Larson Allen, and Clifton-Larson Allen performed the audit of the fiscal year 23 annual comprehensive financial report. So I'm here just to provide the results of that audit, and some required communications that we as auditors are required or obligated to bring to the board's attention as a part of the audit. So I am very happy to present that we issued an unmodified audit opinion this year. This is a very clean or the highest level of assurance that I, as your auditor, can provide over the financial statements themselves. So it's a great testament to the work that goes into putting those statements together, not only for the audit time, but throughout the year, and collecting the information and make sure the financial transactions are not materially misstated. I'm also happy to report that during our audit, we did not note any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control or financial reporting either. So again, that's, it's a great testament to the work that goes in day to day of recording the financial information and making sure there's sound internal control system over those transactions and the overall financial reporting. We did have a new accounting standard this year that went into play. It was Government Accounting Standards Number 96, related to subscription-based information technology arrangements. But basically, it required the management to go through all of your contracts and agreements related to information technology to see if it met certain requirements under the standard to be reported as a liability for the future payments that are obligated under those contracts. It was a significant undertaking for management and just not only in Norfolk Schools, but all our school systems across the country had implemented this standard. So it was a lot of complexity to it, and, and overall, it was, it was just one of those, one of those standards we had to get through and get through this year. So one thing to note in your financial statement is that we do have a couple estimates. Those estimates obviously are subject to change based on future outcomes, and they include your estimate for pension liability, other post-employment liability, and the incurred but not reported self-insurance claims. They're all actuarial calculations, so the school board does engage actuaries to perform an analysis and provide, get information from the school system to determine what those acts, those liabilities are. We do review the reports and make sure that the assumptions and facts that are going into them are reasonable based on industry standards, as well as any accounting guidance that might be applicable to them. And overall, we found those estimates were reasonable. There was one corrected misstatement related to the OPEB liability that management made of approximately 1.1 million. The demographic information that went to the actuary had a couple inaccuracies in it, so management resented the file to the actuary. They went back and redid their calculations, and there was a corrected misstatement, the financial statements of about $1 million. So, but that was corrected and, and found by management. And then lastly, we did have two uncorrected misstatements in the financial statements. One was related to the implementation of the new, of the new standard related to those contracts for IT. There is a lot of complexity when you review IT contracts, especially if you're an accountant and not an IT person or even a legal person when it comes to contracts. So they can get pretty complex, and there was one contract for about 1.8 million that was recorded that when we looked at it, we thought it did not meet the criteria under the standard. So we considered it immaterial, and therefore it was not corrected, but I need to bring that to your attention. And then the other one we had was related to revenue. By coincidence, that was approximately 1.8 million dollars as well of revenue that was understated in fiscal year 23 due to correction of fiscal year 22 by management. So at the end of the year, at June 30th, your net position was properly stated once that flushed through the two years. So again, we didn't So again, we didn't determine that was immaterial for correction in the financial statements. And lastly, I just want to say a huge thank you. Overall, the audit went very smoothly from our perspective. This was my first year as principal and the engagement, so it was a little bit of a learning curve, but we greatly appreciate. Everybody throughout the school system helps with our audit. I know a lot of people think it's an accounting function, but we hit so many different departments, whether it be information technology, or procurement, or payroll. And so we're greatly appreciative of, you know, the level of responsiveness that we had to our requests for information and in questions that we had. So thank you to everybody that helped out with that. We appreciate it. And with that, I will gladly take any questions you might have.
Well, Board Members, you've heard the presentation. Is there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Jordan?
Thank you. I didn't quite follow the the $1.1 million liability. Can you can you break it down for me a little bit?
Sure. So the school system sends information to the actuary based on demographic information and the makeup of the population in order for the actuary to assess what the future payments will be for other post-employment benefits. That liability is recorded in the financial statements as an estimate. That data was not quite accurate. It was reran by management, given to the actuary, and they were able to adjust their calculations, and that's what the the difference was from the first actuary report to the second actuary report.
My next question, I'd just like to get some further understanding behind the unexpendated fund balance and what was captured. There was a, I can't lose my place, but there was a description here that previously the council or the city did not physically revert funds. And then we know in December that that did occur. So one, I'd just like to get a better understanding because I was trying to get clarity on this before. So does that mean that the the school system had money in its bank account and that the city pulled the money from the bank account, or is the bank account on the city's side? I still don't quite follow how the city was able to revert the funds without cooperation from from us.
You said that happened in December of '23?
Uh.
Mrs. Spivey can explain.
Is that different from what's in this in this document? There was, I thought I saw a note, and I thought that's what I was referring to. I'll find the page, Camille. What page is it on?
I think on 10, under Budgetary Controls. If I'm looking at the same thing you are.
Page 10?
Of, I'm looking at what's on Board Docs, yeah. Page 10, under Budgetary Controls.
Yes, is that right? Yes. So in so in here, it says that, uh, compliance, this means. No, this is not it. There was a, there was a section in here that was explaining that in historically, the city would leave unexpendated fund balances in School Board accounts. But then recently, that's not the exact word till I find it, that the city captured the funding. And so I'm just trying to get, right, for the first time, so I'm just trying to get some clarity around around that.
So you do have due to city payables that they can take. That's that's more of a political thing, more of an accounting thing.
It's more of a what kind of thing?
A political, I mean, a political thing that they're accounting for it. I'm not quite sure what your question is for me.
I don't, maybe it's not for you. I don't, I'm just, I'm, I got this audit report, it's mentioned in the audit, and I thought maybe you were the one that put it there, so I was asking for.
So the financial statements are prepared by management. We just provide the audit opinion related to it. So they are the responsibility of management.
Okay, well, I'll try.
Please do.
I I believe you're probably looking at the section of the Management and Discussion Analysis that's in in front of the actual financial statements. In there, we do discuss that the amount received that we ended up receiving from the city is less than the amount that was budgeted. There's two two factors in that. One is it's been a factor for a number of years of the way that the city budgets debt service money to pay the debt service for the schools, but we they we never actually receive those funds. And that's something you've, that you've seen in other reports. The difference this year is based on a a conversation that was had between management and and council. We were required this year that once a calculation was made of how much of city funds we had that we didn't spend, that that money, it was, that we were obligated to return that money to the city. Because the city handles both of our accounts, so we have, you know, banking account, the the schools have banking account, you know, bank accounts, and so does the city. But the city treasurer, you know, handles both of those accounts. The treasurer, City Treasurer's Office, was able to remove those funds from the school system's accounts and move them into city accounts. So as of the balance sheet that that you're looking at, the financial statements, it shows a liability of $32.9 million that we owed the city. At this point, the city has removed that amount of money from the school's bank account.
So maybe this has nothing to do with the audit, I don't know, but it it, I'm still concerned about that practice in that. So at at one time, when we had the unexpendated fund balances, the board, if I can recall correctly, dealt with it by maybe September. So we we knew in June that we would have these unexpendated fund balances, and then whatever conversations that had to take place between administration and the city would take place. And then I thought the board would act one way or the other around September. And then I think now, you know, as we, like, we just got the budget presentation, it gets pushed off. It's part of the operating budget conversation that we have in March and April. So and, you know, I've I've raised concerns about us running these unexpendant balances. So I'm I'm just, you know, ma- maybe it's a conversation that the the governing bodies need to have. But if if the city, I'm not, I mean, they have the right to do it, but there's potential impact. You know, I just want to get a better understanding of the process because it's just alarming to me that if we have been doing a practice and then some decision somewhere by somebody came up to change that, then I like to have greater comfort around, is that a city managerial action that was taken? Was it a council action to the city managerial leaders that took place? Because I'm just, I know that in our funding formula and revenue sharing formula and what we have to do, it just, to me, feels, as a board member, I just feel blindsided by that. And I think it requires more consideration, or maybe I like to have a better understanding than what it says in here that historically it's been one way and now it's this way. I think that there's been some turnover on all sides, on both sides of the House. And so that it just makes me uncomfortable to that that's the way that this was done. Because now, as we go through the budget process, we will be requesting that those unexpendant fund balances be used for certain purposes. So then when the city, if the city approves our request, then do the the funds shift back and we go back through this cycle all over again? It just, to me, it just seems that there's some additional communication that that needs to take place as the School Board has our responsibility in terms of how we use and manage our funds for the benefit of our students.
And and I am, I I understand, I believe I understand your concerns. Although I I am one of the changes that happened, the conversation about this happened prior, prior to me coming. It with, it was with my predecessor, Mr. Jenkins, and with our accounting director, Liesel Devery. And it was my understanding that that conversation was requested by our counsel, our legal counsel. And and based on that conversation, we didn't have any choice. And we, as NPS staff, didn't have any choice as to what happened with any of those unspent funds.
Can I just make a comment? I was gonna say, the the portion that I dealt with was simply to point out both to the city officials and to your predecessor that Virginia law quite clearly says that all funds that were provided to the School Board by appropriation of the local government, not expended at the end of the fiscal year, must return. And I made that advice because it came to my attention, and I don't know how that developed. And I was not involved in it. But that for a series of years, those funds had not formally returned, and in effect, the city was allowing the School Board to carry a balance from, I think it was back maybe as far as three or four fiscal years. And so it it was clear under the law that that had to be corrected, and that's what occurred. It was about this time last year, and going forward, that's how it it must be. And the idea is that sometime before the end of the fiscal year, as long as the city continues and it has a a policy to that effect, that it's willing to return, under certain circumstances, any unspent surpluses back to the board, that prior to the end of the fiscal year, the board has to make its request, which in the past has been done by passing a resolution. And then the council and the administration will ultimately, with my office's help, draft a special appropriation order, independent of the budget order, that then returns the funds requested back to the School Board. And my understanding is that's going to happen as part, in the next month or so, as part of the finalizing of the annual budget process for the School Board.
Yeah, and I I I think the the process that you described, Attorney Cloud, is what I was used to. And so that's why I've like for every year, at least the last few years, I've been asking about that because I thought it was, something had changed and it was different because we weren't taking that that action, and it was getting rolled up in, at least for me, as was getting rolled up into the overall budget discussion. It caused confusion, at least for me. And and then for the, again, I'm not, this, I'm not, this is not a negative thing, it's just something that that occurred. I just think that there needs to be some clarity, at least I would request, that we have some clarity around what the processes are as relates to our our carryforward funds, or whatever you want to call it. There've been, you know, issues in the past where this carried forward funds has become a bone of contention between School Boards and City Council. I don't want to see that in Norfolk. But but I do think from a board's perspective, we need to be clear on on these balances, what the intended use for for them will be, what the outcomes will be, and not not have that scenario. My my last question slash comment, so the the report that we're receiving, is this considered a a draft? Or is this a, when we when we vote, can you remind us what we are doing as we vote on this? We're voting to accept. What is it that our vote is 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 signaling? Just just to accept it? Okay. Okay, there's one other point of concern that I have. In the in the narrative, going back up to page five, there's language in here about the mission, the board goals, the board priorities, five goals for achieving equity excellence for all, drive for five, strategic plan goals. To me, all that needs to be cleaned up because this is this is legacy language that I think is one of the challenges that we have as a board, is being clear what our goals are and what we're trying to achieve. So the the reference to the Accountability Plan and those goals, those have long been overcome by other action. And and then the the drive for five goals are listed one way. Then the strategic plan goals are listed, really referencing the strategic plan piece. The current board goals aren't referenced at all, and and so I I feel that that needs to be cleaned up and be clear and concise so that the messaging that we're sending as a School Board in terms of what our goals are and how we communicate that to the community and all involved is clear and consistent. And I, from my personal view, I think this is a combining of a lot of the legacy stuff that we need to clean up and be clear on what our goals are as a board and what our strategic initiatives are as a as a division. So, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Basin, then, Mr. Clanton.
Well, part of part of my question, I had my hand up before, sorry, and I Mrs. Spivey has answered part of my question, but since you did call on me, I do want to offer support and a suggestion around what Mr. Jordan just just said regarding having, you know, the narrative cleaned up and to possibly either in our motion, take that action to clean it up and then perhaps adopt it or approve it at another date or address it through the motion. But I do support what Mr. Jordan just said.
Mr. Clanton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And with all due respect and listening to my colleagues, I'm just trying to get clarity on what the report is actually capturing. Mr. Jordan did speak about a lot of things that we're still in work on and that we have been working through throughout this year. But I'm looking here that this is a comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending June 30 of 2022. So if that's the on me, I don't know what that was. Okay, sorry, that was the certificate I'm looking at. So this is ending in 2023, and I know that this becomes, and it comes in a a document that we utilize here, but it's concluding last school year, June 30th. And if I'm not mistaken, by that point in time, we really hadn't flushed out some of the new things that we had approved. So it's capturing that year, and this is what those things were. We are still working through what those final things, and we we continue to talk throughout the summer and moving throughout here throughout the fall, that a lot of those things in that narrative would be what would be true at the end of June 30 of 2024, which I think that we would complete. I would just, my suggestion is I I definitely honor what my my colleagues are trying to say, but I think that this report captures in the truthfulness of what we concluded at June 30 of 2023, and that we would be able to present the correct narrative and the things that we're working through at the conclusion of this school year of June 30 of 2024. So I would encourage us to move forward in completing that and to accept the report it is presented here today, but definitely taking note that we'll be looking at the narrative, making sure that we have the correct goals that have been approved by the board, and so that we can do that and and reflect that of June 30 for 2024.
Okay, hearing all voices then, may I have a motion on the floor to approve the NPS Financial Audit Presentation?
Madam Chair, I
Madam Chair, I, uh, request that we approve the NPS financial audit presented by Clifton Larson.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just, just the, just for, in response to what my colleague, Mr. Clanton, said, when the, when we went through the conversation around the strategic plan and we were discussing goals and initiatives, it was during that time when we closed out the, uh, the accountability plan and all that got rolled up into, um, the, the strategic plan, high level goals. So that's in part what I'm referencing here. And, um, and I just think it's important that we clean it. I mean, that's, what we communicate, um, is, is, is important. Um, I, I accept your, your position, but I just wanted to clarify that, um, there were actions that we, that we took that I still think some of this stuff is carryover. And the other reason why I referenced it was, I guess, the, the letter that we received is dated January, I think it was, uh, recent. And that's why I was originally asking the question if it was a draft or not, because I thought it would be an opportunity to, uh, you know, to get it together. But, uh, but I do see that the January date is 2023 and not 2024, so. But I do still think we need to clear that piece of it out before we publish it beyond, beyond this point. But I, whatever the, the will of the board is, that's, that's fine.
And, and all due respect and definitely respecting my colleagues' comments there. Dr. Burtsong, if I can just get clarity here, um, what's listed as school board goals on this sheet here, are these the current goals that we had approved at that particular point in time?
So if it was for school year 2023, to your point, as you know, we had not approved the, the new five goals. Because, you know, we have been going back and forth with goal five until just recently. So, um, it, it does appropriately reflect where we were during last fiscal year.
Okay, however, in respect to my, uh, my colleague's comment about the date on this letter, is this supposed to be 2024?
What page are you looking at?
I'm looking at, um, right after the goals. It has January 19th, 2023?
I think that's correct.
That's supposed to be correct?
I think I was.
You're, that's right.
On page seven, there's a letter.
That be?
Right before the economic outlook?
I'm getting there, it's, it's taking me just a second, I'm getting there.
And I'm looking at my tablet, so it's a little all.
Okay.
Right, right before, you have it, Dr. Burtsong, right there.
Should have been, uh, a 2024.
Yeah.
This, January 19th. Yeah, this, for this document.
Right, and that's how, that's how I was interpreting it, and that's why I thought that, that we could, that it's, that, that letter should be.
Scroll down one more.
Yes, 20, it says 2023.
Yeah, this is for the fiscal year ending on June 30th, 2023, so, yeah.
That date is incorrect.
It should be 2024, is that the right?
It should be 2024.
It should be 2024.
So in, in light of that, and I, I just don't want to belabor in that one, is there any legal thing that we have to do that today this has to be approved? And there's nothing, um, that would belabor us from getting, making sure that we have that date corrected?
No. I don't believe so.
Don't think so? Okay, so.
So from our perspective, um, that, that is the report of the transmittal letter. Um, our report, our opinion is dated, um, I believe December 14th, 2023. So that would not, that would be the date that have to stay consistent.
Got it.
If you guys, if that, we can make that correction very easily.
You can make that correction soon. Okay, so if, if that, if the correction can be made and, and a final copy is submitted that way, then I'd just like to, um, because we have a motion and a second, right, Madam?
Yes, we do.
Just talking about not doing friendly amendments, but I'd like to just, um, amend that by stating that with any noted corrections, date corrections, um, to accept the report. So we go ahead and change that date to, to 2024.
And. Ms. Basine?
And given what was, given the date, I, I think it, I think what we communicate amongst ourselves and to the public is important. And we did change our goals prior to that date. So I would also, if, if we're going to make a friendly amendment to include that correction to the date, I would also include the goals, um, to include our, our five goals as well.
But the, but this date right here is being checked, this is when.
That's 2024, yeah.
Right, this should be 2024, but the goals up until when they completed the audit is what had been.
Those goals were retired in September 2022, when we voted to adopt the strategic plan. So, you know, to Mr. Jordan's point, those goals are legacy from the 2021, 22 school year, which I know we took the vote on the strategic plan in, in September of 2022. So I think that, I do think, I feel very strongly about our communication, um, being clear and updated. And I do want to, what, what I had my hand up to also say is that, you know, Ms. Moore Buffalo and I are on the audit committee. And, um, we heard the present, you know, the presentation with the auditors, but we did not have the copy of the report. So when, when you all received it is also when we received it. So, I mean, we all received it at the same time. Uh, so some of these questions that are, and comments that are coming up are coming up also now from me because I had not seen the full report prior to when the full board received it. So, um, just wanted to put that out there.
So in light of that, um, Madam Chair, uh, if there's nothing legal that's requiring us to approve this tonight, I'd like to just move to defer this action on this item to our next business meeting so that we can, any additional questions, flush that out so that we can all be prepared and be on ease, so that we can have general consensus on that.
I think that would be really helpful.
So I move to refer to our next business, defer to our next business meeting.
Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry, I didn't put my hand up fast enough. Sorry, that went really quickly, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull my thoughts together. And I, I appreciate wanting to move forward and clean up messaging. Um, I think there's a lot of work on the board, which we've acknowledged ourselves, on messaging on our end. And I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding why we would need to put that work on a financial report when this is, this is telling us financially what we need to know. And our school board communication should be coming from us. And while I understand some of the concerns here, granted, I, I, I don't have those goal, those goal dates because I was not involved in that process, um, I wasn't here yet. Uh, I, it seems like a, a, a lot of extra work to add, to push this off to another meeting for something that's not changing the, the content, yes, the content of, of this report. And there are, there's work on the board's end that we can do to work on our messaging. Though I do understand the concerns, I just feel like there's things we can do without, um, pushing this off and, and adding to what sounds like we're already going to have a pretty busy meeting next time, anyway.
Well, can I make a comment? That maybe my recommendation is as we move forward for the book for next year that this is something that the board reviews before it is even, um, put into print. So, um, I know this process starts, what, August, September or such? Maybe the board needs to receive their letter that is going in the book and review it as, as a board and approve it. So then we won't be here trying to clean up the letter from the board, you know, and goals and those kind of things. So we, we can lay our eyes on it before it goes into print. Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I, I, I was just going to say that there were, there are two. One, I, I raised the issue about the communication because I think it's important and, and that we need to update all of our documents. The other thing that's more substantively, um, important to me is, um, the written clarity around the, uh, the actions related to the unused local funds. I think that paragraph needs to have more clarity around, uh, what was done in the past, what was done now, and what the process will be moving forward. I, I think that, that to me is of, uh, of a greater substantive piece, although I, you know, I stand where I stand in terms of what we communicate because I believe we, what we communicate matters. But that, that piece around the, um, the unused funds and the action that the city took and who said what, I mean, I, all that doesn't need to be detailed. I just don't feel comfortable that this captures what this, um, what the change, what the action was or is. So I like the, if we're going to make adjustments, then that would be the other adjustment where I think needs to be some greater clarity, since the board is signing off on that. And, um, and, and frankly, in our policy, the board is responsible. So I want us to be responsible in being responsible.
Okay, well, with that said, Mr. Clanton, can you, um, repeat your, um, the motion for us, please?
Yeah, I'm.
Motion to, yeah, I just want everyone to be clear, so when she calls the roll, everyone would know what.
Thank you.
Thank you, so I, um, my motion was to defer this action to our next business meeting.
Yes, and I seconded that.
All right, what?
Do we need to do anything because there was already a motion on?
No, my motion takes precedence.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
All minds clear?
Yes.
Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, we're at the end of our agenda, but I do want to give Mr. Satter an opportunity to make some comments before we dismiss this either. Mr. Satter?
I have no comments or questions at this time, thank you.
Have no comments?
No.
Okay, well, with that said, thank you, everyone, for a great meeting, great discussion, and everyone have a safe ride home, this meeting is adjourned.